Good evening, folks. We're going to go ahead and get our meeting started this evening. It is 6:02 PM. I'll call the meeting for April 14th to order. And before we start with our agenda, if folks will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you. Alrighty, thank you very much. And Ms. Trimble will do a roll call when you're ready.
Yes, good evening. Roll call beginning with Anderson.
Present.
Becerra.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Arlino.
Present.
Farmer.
Present.
Jones, I believe, is absent. Jordan?
Present.
Nelson?
Present.
Nugent?
Present.
Savage?
Counselor Savage is absent this evening.
So, Cheryl?
Present.
And Bessica?
Present.
Alright, and we do have a call.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. I do have a suggested change to our agenda this evening. And it is regarding regular business under Committee Reports 9.1D, the Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee Report. There was an item under there, the release of daycare agreement clause. And after the committee meeting last week, I've had several council members that have shared some questions, some concerns, and some thoughts with me. So we had a good conversation about how best to move forward. And without objection, I'd like to see that this request go back to committee. So I'd like to pull it off the agenda tonight. I think we should give this only about 30 days to hear this in committee and then think about what the next recommendation is in terms of the alternatives and things like that that the developers are taking a look at. And so the staff looked at the schedule this afternoon, and we'd like to bring this back for committee on April 30th. We would very possibly hear like an informational session, how we got here. I mean, this project has been in motion since prior to the pandemic, 2018, 2019. There's a long history with this project, the progress that's been made, the changes to it as a result of the circumstances resulting from a really challenging market and things that all Missoulaans are dealing with. And so I'd like for us to have an opportunity to hear from staff in terms of an informational report. And then either possibly in a separate committee, we'd hear a recommendation or maybe during that same one. So I think that's yet to be determined. But if there is no objection, then we will make that agenda adjustment this evening. Does that sound okay? Alright.
So, Mayor, no objection to pulling it off this evening's agenda. We were not planning on having committees on April 30th. Were you hoping to have just the single committee that day or maybe put it on another day?
Mr. Bickle, you and I were chatting about schedule. I don't, looking around, I'm looking to another day. I think we'll figure out another day.
Okay, I'll just put a date to be determined.
That sounds great, thank you. And we'll coordinate that with council leadership. Thank you for catching that. Good job. Thank you. Alright, folks, thanks. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Okay. Then, that leads us to our next agenda item, which is approval of the minutes. And we have minutes from April 7th, 2025. Any questions for staff or any changes to those minutes? Not seeing any, so those minutes, I'm starting to get my screen up here. Ms. Trimble, just so you know, my second screen, I don't have available with me, so I might not catch some of the things I'm normally monitoring there. Okay. Alright, then those minutes will remain as submitted. And next, we will review our committee schedule for April 16th. And Claire, do we have any changes to the committee's schedule for this coming Wednesday?
No changes to the way that it was published. I do want to note that due to some scheduling conflicts, we actually had multiple conflicts during the day. We're going to be starting at 8:00 AM, which is a little unusual. So if the public is interested, they might want to set their alarm a little early.
Thanks for that. Appreciate that. Alright. Committees start at 8:00 AM this April, or this April, this April 16th. And alright, thank you for that. Next, we'll move on to special presentations and proclamations. And we do have a Neighborhood Council update this evening. We've got the Franklin to Fort Leadership Team Report. If you'll come on up and share your name for the record and give your report, please.
Sure. Hello, I'm Clint Whittle-Frazier, W-H-I-T-T-L-E hyphen F-R-A-Z-I-E-R. And I'm on the Franklin to the Fort Leadership Team. And I'm here to say that we're hosting our annual Franklin to the Fort Neighborhood General Meeting on Wednesday, April 23rd, at Franklin Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The leadership team will present on their newly created Neighborhood Action Plan and receive feedback in a survey and present opportunities within the Neighborhood Grants Program. There will also be quick presentations and tabling opportunities from Franklin to the Fort Neighbors in Action, North MRL Triangle Redevelopment Plan, and folks from the Reserve Street Safety Action Plan, as well as a question and answer session with city council representatives and leadership team elections. And we're also going to offer a free raffle for folks in attendance. And we hope people in the neighborhood take our survey.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Will Frazier. Does anybody have any questions? No. I just want to say thank you. And thank you for so much engagement that you're providing for the neighborhood at that general meeting. And I hope folks take the survey as well. And I'm sure, obviously, you're working with the Office of Neighborhoods to get that out to the Neighborhood Council and hope to see you there. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Thank you. Oh, please, yeah. Go ahead. Counselor Jordan, please.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to thank Mr. Whittier-Frazier, too, for being a part of the Franklin to the Fort Neighborhood Council. And there are some leadership spots available on that team. And if you're interested and you live in that area, please, either you can email me or you can do an internet search for the Neighborhood Council. But they are looking for some members on their leadership team, so help them out. They're a great group. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Alright. Thanks for being here. Next, we'll move on to our proclamations for this evening. And the first is our Sexual Assault Action Month. So, let me get that out here. Okay. Ms. Trimble will share that on screen. Okay. There we go. Okay, whereas Sexual Assault Action Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health and safety implications for the city and county of Missoula and beyond. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, our friends, and our families, studies show one in six women and one in 33 men have experienced, completed, or attempted rape. One in nine girls and one in 53 boys experience child sexual abuse at the hands of an adult. And 13% of all college students experience rape or sexual assault through physical force, violence, or incapacitation. And whereas people of color, especially Native American women, experience violence, unwanted sexual contact, or abuse at a much higher rate than other groups. And whereas prevention is everyone's job, and it means stopping sexual violence before it happens by changing norms that allow it to exist in the first place, ranging from attitudes, values, and behaviors to laws, institutions, and social norms. And whereas we strongly support the efforts of national, state, and local sexual assault prevention and response programs, and applaud those especially in Montana, Missoula County, and the University of Montana in their efforts to create safe and healthy communities. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, hereby recognize the month of April 2025 as Sexual Assault Action Month. I just wanted to add a bit here about some of the efforts that we have here at the City of Missoula. And some things folks might not realize is just how much specialty we have on the police force. We have a detective that is dedicated to investigating child abuse and child sexual assault cases. And obviously, it's a really difficult job. In conversation with the detective the other day, we were talking about how sometimes we think maybe members of the public don't see some of the things that happen behind the scenes. And I shared with this detective that I'd be reading this proclamation this evening and the importance of casting light on Sexual Assault Action Month. And he shared some interesting things with me I thought it would be worth sharing since it's coming from the City of Missoula. The Missoula Police Department takes a survivor-centered approach in investigating child abuse. We ensure that disclosures of abuse, whether delayed or acute, are well documented and thoroughly investigated through a multidisciplinary approach. The Missoula Police Department trains all officers in responding to child abuse as well as recognizing the signs of potential abuse. The Missoula Police Department educates mandatory reporters under state law to ensure that those who may receive a disclosure of abuse is prepared to act in order to end the cycle of abuse. And lastly, the Missoula Police Department partners with the Missoula County Public Schools to ensure safety in our schools while establishing relationships between police officers and families in our community. And I just wanted to share a little bit of that detail and also just share my appreciation for the work that many of our officers and detectives on the force. They deal with some very challenging issues at times, and often, again, it's behind the scenes. And I'm very appreciative of that effort and the approach that they take. So I just wanted to share that with you all. Thank you. Our next proclamation that I'll read this evening is in regards to Strengthening Families Month. So, whereas Strengthening Families Month is observed every year in April to increase awareness of child abuse prevention and the crucial role each person has to play in shaping the healthy development and futures of our children and families. And whereas every child deserves to grow up safe, supported, and loved, preventing abuse and neglect isn't just about protecting children. It's about strengthening families, building healthier communities, and creating a future where all children can thrive. And whereas, when we invest in prevention, education, and family support, we help break cycles of trauma and open the door to brighter, more hopeful futures. We can be the difference. And whereas, together as a united community, we reaffirm our commitment to protecting our children, supporting families, and building a future free from abuse and neglect. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, hereby recognize the month of April 2025 as Strengthening Families Month. Are any members of the community here to speak on either of these proclamations this evening? Big K.
From Montana. Yes, verbal sexual harassment is a legitimate form of sexual assault. Calling somebody a chomo is a sexual invitation that you are a molestation of child, as you said in school. Let me read the rest of it. And can have a significant impact on one's individual's well-being. Toxic stress. And toxic, what's that word? It'll come to me, toxic deceit of these individuals of the Russian Embassy, which is 10-11 Broadway. And the China Counselor, where this happened, March 16th, at 5:10 PM and 5:35 PM, and threatened that 5:45 PM of the kingpin of the China Counselor, advocated by the Blue Code, which is the ch, that chomanizers. They are the police officers of our city and others that advocate the sexual assault called choma. Nature of creating a hostile, intimidating, or offensive environment that's advocated by the comrades of the facility. And that would be the police department also because they did not investigate the cameras, where I could have pointed out where exactly that happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Big K. Alright. Well, on that note, Strengthening Families and Sexual Assault Action Month, both being recognized in the month of April. Alright, that wraps up our proclamations. I'll move now to another special presentation. We have youth engaged in leadership and learning here to present to the council this evening. I'm sorry, I don't know who the lead might be on this, but whomever is here to present, come on up. Happy to have you here.
Thank you, Council and Ms. Davis. I think we have a PowerPoint that...
Great, looks like it's up on screen there. Oh, it's on our screen yet. Sometimes a little bit of a delay. Should be coming up here anytime.
My name is Dana Kingfisher, K-I-N-G-F-I-S-H-E-R. And I'm the Community Prevention and Health Promotion Director at All Nations Health Center. I'll speak, and then all of our youth and our other staff will have their turn. So All Nations is committed to promoting sustainable, healthy lives for our native people and the surrounding community through culturally-based holistic care. Our YELL program, is what we call it, reflects a youth-led action research model. And this curriculum helps promote participatory behaviors, social-political awareness, critical thinking, problem-solving, and public speaking. So we started in October, and now we've culminated to educate decision-makers, which is why we're here today. So I'm really excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Hello, Mayor, hello, Missoula's City Council. Let's see, other slide.
There we go.
Hello, my name is Julian Hiwaker, H-I-W-A-L-K-E-R. I am a youth manager here, and our staff is Dana Kingfisher, Valine Talks-Different, Thomas McClure, and... Can I go to the next slide?
So I kind of went into it earlier, but this is just a rundown of the YELL curriculum. This is our Native Youth Council, and we kind of have council, youth council members kind of come in and out throughout the year. We use Robert's Rules of Orders to conduct our meetings and meet the first Wednesday of every month.
The Native Youth Council here at All Nations Health Center is made up of mostly 15- to 24-year-old American Indian Alaska Native youth. All Nations provides a platform for youth-led community action to address suicide and substance abuse misuse through culturally-relevant activities and community outreach. The Native Youth Council meets every Wednesday of the month from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Next slide. And tonight, we have a few of our Native Youth Council, and I will let them introduce themselves.
Good evening, Council. My name is Evander Skelkane, S-C-A-L-P-C-A-N-E. And I am Blackfeet, Northern Cheyenne, and Hidatsa. I attend Hellgate High School, and I'm a senior there. Also, I am the president of the Native Youth Council here in Missoula at All Nations Health Center.
Good evening, Council. My name is Letson McQueen, M-C-L-E-A-N. I'm Blackfeet. I attend Big Sky High School, and I'm a member of the Native Youth Council at All Nations.
Good evening, Council. My name is Chander Bighawk. My last name is B-I-G-H-A-W-K. I am a member, an ordinary member of the Youth Council.
Next slide. Okay. YELL is a social justice curriculum we've been going through. And the issue topic that the Native Youth Council have been chosen is mental health. And they see it as a big problem here within their community. And they did a lot of research. They gathered or researched data. They practiced surveys, surveying each other, writing letters, and really preparing for tonight, so... Yeah, next slide.
In the two graphs that are attached to the slideshow, these are from 2021 and have been from 2011. And these numbers are illustrate that in 2021, the suicide rate among American Indian, Alaskan Native populations observed a huge spike at, or beginning at, age 15. Again, in 2021, the suicide rate specifically among Indigenous females aged 15 to 19 was five times greater than non-Hispanic white females in the same age range. And American Indian and Alaskan Native population suicide rate peaked among ages 25 to 34 and began to decline at 35 in our research for relevant statistics.
Next slide. In 2021, suicidal thoughts and behaviors among Indian slash Alaskan Native youth and young adults in the past year were slightly higher than the general population. Despite these numbers, targeted programs and funding for people in our age group aim to lower mortality rates, promote culture, and build on factors. Programs like YELL and the Native Youth Council help coaches to speak up for ourselves, advocate for positive change, and collaborate with local organizations. We can take continued support for All Nations Centers encouraged, and we work to collaborate externally across organizations and Missoula schools to address mental health challenges, efforts at the local level, with established long-term strategies that will improve health outcome for our community. Thank you, Council.
Our solutions for these could be cultural activities in schools, nature programming, gym memberships, fair passes, three-day camps or after-school camps, animal therapy, cooking classes, culturally-relevant art classes, and talking circles. Next slide, please.
So these are our highlights from the year. We've been active in the community by hosting a language series, Stories Under the Stars. And we had a New Year's Eve's trip. And, but, my favorite of all of them was the, when we hosted the Stories Under the Stars. Because, what's it called? It felt like, like those stories I never heard before, where I, and I was directly helping cooking.
Thank you so much time, or thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us. We really appreciate it.
Good evening. Absolutely, Dana. Thank you. And thank you all so much for your presentation, your work to prepare for this evening. We hope that you'll come back. And if it's okay, is there any questions that anybody has or anything for our youth leadership group tonight? Just want to make sure folks have the opportunity. Yeah, in comments, you bet. Counselor Jordan, please.
Yeah, I just really want to thank you all for coming. I know that this can be quite an intimidating space for most people. But as a white person, I need to know more about our Native American neighbors. We are on stolen land, and I want to know more about your culture and more about how we can possibly work better with our Native American communities. And when you come and spend time with us like this, for me, it is really helpful. And I appreciate you braving the, you know, all the weird stuff, seeing your picture up on the screen and whatnot, to come and share your culture and your learning with us. And I hope you do come back because it's really interesting to me, and I want to know how I can be supportive, if that's a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan. Alright. Counselor Becerra, don't go. There's more questions or comments coming your way.
Can't get off that easy. Just one, one quick question for you. I really appreciate you all coming here. And I think that with mental health issues plaguing our youth these days, it's really important that they're hearing from their peers. So I'm just wondering if the information that you collect is also shared with other people in your high school or like at Hellgate? Or if you, if you share this information with your peers at school?
Come on up.
So we were going to conduct a survey for the native students through our MCPS, but we didn't have enough time to do that. But we, I feel like I put like a preference on mental health, and bringing up to like friends is important to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your great questions and comments. Again, really happy to have you here. Thank you very much for the effort that you're making in leadership development and for coming to council tonight, sharing not only with council and me, but also members of the public, lots of folks that are here in the audience as well as folks that watch our city council meetings online. And we'd love to have you back. Thank you so much. Take care. Alright. Alright. So that wraps up the section of our agenda that is special presentations and proclamations. We don't have any public hearings this evening. We don't have any new business, so that moves us right to the consent agenda. And so Ms. Trimble, if you'll go ahead and call the consent agenda up on screen and then read through that for folks that are watching on MCAT tonight. It's a lengthy one.
It is. Give me one second.
Not a problem. Take your time.
Alright, on this evening's consent agenda, first, we have a motion to approve accounts payable per check stated April 15th, 2025, in the amount of $1,933,889.99. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Coke's courts for an amount not to exceed $131,000.00 for tennis court resurfacing and striping of four pickleball courts. We have a motion to set a public hearing for May 5th, 2025, to consider approval of up to $112,700, including due diligence and related costs from a combination of 2006 and 2018 open-space bond funds for the acquisition of the Tip Clark Fork River property of approximately 16.5 acres adjacent to the Kim Williams Trail. We have a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Charles Bissoncon, John O'Connor, and Dale Harris to the Parks and Recreation Board for a term beginning May 1st, 2025 and expiring on April 30th, 2028. We have a motion to approve the resolution relating, related to the $4,000, $408,000 storm water system revenue bond from a DNRC Water Pollution Control State Revolving Loan Program in the series from 2025. We have a motion to approve the resolution related to the financing of the proposed water systems improvement, water main replacement project, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. We have a motion to approve the contract with Tischler Bice, updating the city's parks, open space, first, and emergency medical service, law enforcement, community services, and transportation impact fee studies. We have a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council awarding $20,000 in neighborhood improvement grant funds for fiscal year 2025 to certain individuals and directing staff to negotiate contracts with said individuals for the mayor's signature. This was presented in committee, but a quorum was not present. We have a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Peter Walker Keller to the Parks Commission for a term beginning May 1, 2025 and expiring on April 30, 2029. We have a motion setting a public hearing on May 5, 2025 for an ordinance amending Section 10 dot 22 dot 240 of the Parking Commission jurisdictional area, Missoula Municipal Code to allow the city council to change the jurisdictional boundaries of the Parking Commission by resolution. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign development agreements with K3 Missoula LLC and with Grant Creek Village PH1 LLC, Infinite Venture Capital LLC, and Ag West Farm Credit LLC for traffic mitigation on Expo Parkway and Grant Creek. We have a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Babcock Reste Guford. Apologies for the name for the police commission for a term beginning May 1, 2025 and expiring on April 30, 2028. And our last item of business is a motion to approve a resolution lowering the maximum sidewalk assessment from $9,000 to $3,500 on family dwellings of one or two dwellings per parcel.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on the consent agenda this evening? I'm not seeing any here. All right. Are there any members of the public online that wish to speak to the consent agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any online either. I'll ask any city council members if anybody wishes to separate an item or if anybody wishes to abstain. Disclose, anything like that. Okay. All right, then. We will go ahead and we will do a voice vote on the consent agenda, please.
All right. All in favor of tonight's consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Right, and that's unanimous.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll next move on to regular business, and we do have a committee report under regular business. This is 9.1A. This is under the Budget and Finance Committee. And this is in regards to a reappointment, reappointing a regular member to the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. And so I might turn to. This was a recommend do pass. It's on the committee reports because we did not get unanimous votes. And this is underneath the Budget and Finance Committee. I don't know that there's certain, there's no staff here to present on this. And I do believe that we'll go ahead and just do a roll call vote on this. But Counselor Cheryl, is there anything that you'd like to present on ahead of time?
Um, I don't have a presentation on it. I'm happy to, if I need to make the motion, I'm happy to do that. I would like to say that Natasha Jones, I know this is, is your reappointment. So I'm, I'm hoping actually, would you like to speak to her as a candidate? I mean, I'd be happy to do that, but she is currently on the MRA board. She was critical in the acquisition as, as part of her legal team with the water company. I think she really adds, adds to this board, so I'm happy to support her. And I guess I would, I would make the recommended motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Natasha Prinzing Jones to the Missoula Redevelopment Agency for a term beginning May 1, 2025 and expiring on April 30, 2029.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Cheryl. And your comments wrap mine up well. I certainly have observed Ms. Prinzing Jones in terms of her efforts, conversation, questions. And I think she serves the City of Missoula and Missoula Redevelopment Agency well, which is why I recommended her reappointment. And I do believe then before, so the motion is on the floor. And so before we move, we will hear council questions or comments. And let me just move to my screen here. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was really sick last week, so I missed a lot of committee meetings. And I would have also voted no on this, and it's not because of anything personal about Natasha Prinzing, but more related to the underlying processes of how the MRA runs. I think that with the, the big budget that it has, that it needs more oversight. And I also believe that having terms that are not subject to voter approval and also having a budget that's not subject to council approval is really problematic for me. So again, this has nothing to do with Ms. Prinzing. It has to do with processes that I do not agree with and that I would like to see changed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too share some of my colleague, Councilmember Jordan's concerns, particularly regards to transparency and oversight of this board, and considering the breadth of budget this agency has, it's always been a concern of mine. And I think to some degree, that's going to become pretty self-evident going forward, particularly when we went to our budget session and, you know, see the role that they may play in our budget calculations over the summer. But for now, I, I can't see this as a mechanism for, you know, changing the way business is done over there per se. I don't think there's going to be any value in keeping someone off a board or keep a vacancy on the board or to reduce number manpower on the board. To me, that for my concerns being what they are, I don't think this is a proper mechanism. So I just want to make those comments, but otherwise I'll be in support of the nomination.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Campbell. Any other council comments? Okay. Not seeing any then. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Ms. Trimble.
All right. Voting on item 9.1 point A point B. The confirmation to the Redevelopment Agency Board, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Rolino?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vaseka?
Yes.
That's eight in favor, two opposed, and two absent, so that motion does pass.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. And thank you, Natasha Prinzing Jones, for your continued service on the Missoula Redevelopment Agency Board of Directors. Okay, that does wrap up our regular business, and we will move on to the state legislature update agenda item number 10. And so we've got Jessica Miller here to provide that update for us.
Good evening, everybody. Jessica Miller with Central Services. Today is day 74 of the session. The scheduled end date of the legislative session is three weeks from today, May 5. The temperature in Helena always starts to change a little bit this time of year, so it's possible that they may end the session sooner than that. We'll see how things go the next couple of weeks. My updates for today are, I want to start with House Bill 311, which requires the refund of rental application fees for any unused portion of, of those fees has to be returned to the applicant. That has passed its second reading today in the Second House, and I believe that that is a, a concur motion. I don't think that there are additional amendments that need to be resolved, so it's likely that that one is actually heading to the governor's desk. SB 133, revising impact fees laws that restricts the use, restricts the rate of our impact fees and the uses. Currently, we charge impact fees for parks and general administration. That removes those uses from what is permitted, and that is, only has one more vote. It's up for third reading tomorrow, and then that will have be heading to Governor Gianforte as well. Last week, Governor Gianforte did sign House Bill 20, which is the one that requires our voted levies to be in dollars. Senate Bill 90 had been tabled in committee. That one has actually taken, been taken from the table and placed on second reading. That's the bill that redistributes certain state tax revenue to primary residence property tax relief, so it doesn't provide additional revenue for cities, but it does provide much needed property tax relief for residents. And we expect that one to, to go to the floor on second reading here within the next day or two. Senate Bill 2, revising the treatment of tax increment upon the expiration of the tax increment financing provision. That one has passed second reading as well. Senate Bill 539, revising property taxes and special amendment, amend assessments, excuse me, places a fair number of restrictions on various assessments, including SIDs. And that one has a hearing tomorrow that our lobbyists will be speaking at. House Bill 594, clarifying the prohibition, prohibition of power of local government to require additional licensing or permitting. That failed on second reading and has been indefinitely postponed. And so that bill would have put, placed a lot of limits on some of our business licensing that we can do. And so that one appears to be failing. There's always a chance that the things can come back, but that one for now has been indefinitely postponed. SB 537, generally revising marijuana tax laws. That one would put some marijuana, marijuana tax revenue into funding for homelessness case management. So that's a bill we're supportive of, and that one looks to be doing fairly well so far. And finally, House Bill 809 prohibiting local governments from enacting red flag gun laws, which is a bill that really helps us protect against domestic violence and things like that. So, or I'm sorry, that, that bill prevents us from enacting things to, to protect people against domestic violence. That bill has passed as well. And that's my report. I'm open for questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions from council members? Not seeing any. Let me go make sure I have my online screen here. Okay, I'm not seeing any in the room or online for this evening then. All right. Ms. Miller, thank you for being here and providing an overview of those bills. Appreciate that. So that wraps up our state legislature update. Again, I'll mention for members of the public that on the city's homepage on our website, there is a link that you can click on, shows what bills we're tracking. So it's an extensive list. So take, take a look there, far more than what Jessica just provided an overview for. We'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items. We allow for three minutes per public comment. Please say your name for the record. Come on up.
BK Montana. Let's start it out with this. All of the bills that threaten the making of Montana Supreme Court election bipartisan is dead. That means we got a nonpartisan Supreme Court as of yet. Let's get back to March 11, when I suspected problems of China consulate with staff engaging in with the threatening individual and sucking up to them, and how they sucked up to one another like they were comrades. That's why I went to the, the Russian Embassy 1110 Broadway. They said I was out for a day because of what reason is none of my business. That's why they're the communists that they are. So the fact of the matter, I told you, if I ever received a threat of that sort again, 911 got called. And they didn't like it, so they stiffed me for another two weeks out for circumstances of challenging them. That's another aspect of the Russian and China aspect that we govern your life with harassment. Now sexual assault will be added to, to the fact of the matter, thanks to our American population. I Googled it, and she got some emails from me on the fact that they're direct information. How should I feel if I feel like I've been raped? And I told you that in other meetings and so forth, I've been raped. Now I'm ultimately being raped by a public establishment that they didn't follow up appropriately, and they stuck it to me too. But they won't give me a citation to bring it to the judge and get it forward to what I'd ultimately like to entertain with Montana and Utah with orthodox Jewish lawyers out of Chicago, better than the Johnny Cochran team. And we're going to go after their paycheck, not the establishment's investment of operating the facility. Because in this case, it's the people that operate the facility that's advocating it, and we need to go after their monetary value of themselves. So how did you feel if you were campaigning and, hey, you're a sexual chomo? I know that for the fact that I'm a prisoner, and I get the real fact of the matter from my buddies in the prison. And that's exactly the mentality I heard March 16 from two individuals of that sort. Plus, I didn't file issues in regards to the one that threatened me on the bus. He leave it the problem, I walked to the back. But things are going to change now. It's not business as usual.
Thanks, BK. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening? Come on up.
Hello. My name is Sally Henkel, and I coordinate Missoula Childcare Advantage with United Way of Missoula County. I came to provide public comment on removing the childcare requirement for Rivera, but with that being sent back to committee, I wanted to express my gratitude for that and taking more time to be thoughtful in that process. The city of Missoula has long been invested in thinking about childcare and especially around Missoula Childcare Advantage. So I'm always happy to answer questions and look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henkel. Thanks for being here. Any other members of the public wishing to make public comment this evening? All right. Online? Great. We'll move on to online. I think I saw Grace Decker. Ms. Decker, when you're ready. Hopefully, you can unmute there, no problem. Give you a sec there. Ms. Decker, if you're available to provide public comment, we're ready for you. Okay. Seems like we might have a mute issue on your side. I'm not. You're enabled to speak on this side. Okay. Ms. Decker, it doesn't sound like we're able to get you to come through this evening. If there's any comments that you wish to email, please feel free to do that to city council, and hopefully we'll hear from you another time. Any other members of the public online wishing to make public comment? Chris K. Chris, can you unmute from your side? Mary or Claire, are you seeing any issues in our system that wouldn't allow folks to be able to add to the meeting?
No, it looks like they're able to unmute when they're ready.
Okay. Chris, we'll give you another second here to see if you can unmute on your side and join us. Sorry. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Counselor Jordan. Star six on your telephone if other ways of unmuting aren't working. Star six. I know generally we don't have two in a row, so it makes you wonder if something's up with the system. All right. Chris, we're not hearing from you either. It doesn't seem like we have anything going on with our system here, but hopefully that is not the case. but hopefully that is not the case. Are there any other members of the public?
Do they call in, we have a number they can call?
Absolutely. Ms. Trimble, do you want to go ahead and read the phone number and possibly share that on our agenda? To place it on the screen?
Sure.
Thank you. Good suggestion, thank you.
The phone number is 406-384-6960 and the phone conference ID is 456096808.
Okay, we'll give it just a second here in case folks are trying to call in. Rotary phones in the back there, next to Claire. Here and there, there's, there's a few, there's a few rotary phones out here, not very many. A lot of kids haven't even seen a rotary phone. I know. Pretty rare, pretty rare. I don't hear anybody calling in? Ms. Trimble, any notification of folks trying to call in?
No, they would appear as phone numbers on our, on our people list, and we don't have any additional people that have joined that way.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks folks. While we tried to make it possible for those members of the public to comment, I do believe that wraps up our public comment, not seeing any other hands raised either in the audience or online. And so that does wrap up our public comment on non-agenda items. Communications from the mayor, I don't have any this evening. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to general comments from City Council members. And Counselor Basara, how about I start with you?
I will pass, thank you.
Okay, you bet, and Counsel Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll pass as well.
Okay, great, thank you, Counsel Jordan?
Thank you, I have a couple of comments. I just wanted to provide an update on the matter that my colleague Mr. Campbell highlighted in his closing comments last week. I did do a bit of a deep dive into the case of Mr. Cordell Cummins, looking at publicly available records. Mr. Cummins did receive four misdemeanor charges between November 24th and March 25th. One was non-jailable, was a non-jailable theft charge, two were for obstruction for not giving the police his name. And one was for vehicle trespass, he was not charged with drunk or disorderly violations. Before Mr. Cummins could be seen in municipal court, he did pick up a felony charge for burglary after trespass. Mr. Cummins went to court on the same day for the four municipal charges and the felony charge. The four misdemeanor charges, he was seen in municipal court where the city attorney recommended that he be released on his own recognizance. Later that same day, he appeared in justice court where the county attorney recommended that he also be released on his own recognizance. Both the city and the county attorney offices made the recommendations to which the justice of the peace and the municipal court judge granted. In both courts, the judges honor the requests, but they did not make them. Since Mr. Cummins' appearance in justice court, the county attorney has dropped the felony charge because there's not enough evidence to convict and has referred the case back to municipal court. No other court appearances have occurred or have been required for the original four municipal infractions or the new referral from the county attorney's office. I just wanted to miss, just to say that the suggestion that municipal court is not holding folks accountable is unfounded. It was the prosecuting attorneys who recommended the course of action in both courts. And just on another note, I wanted to speak to something I know a lot of us are really excited about, which is Senator Bernie Sanders and Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez coming to the Adams Center this Wednesday. And if you somehow have not heard about this and/or haven't signed up, there's still time. Just do an internet search to RSVP for the event, it's pretty easy to find. I do appreciate the accommodations that city staff and council chairs have made for our Wednesday committee meeting so that those of us around the horseshoe may attend. Bernie and AOC are garnering a lot of attention and support for their fight against oligarchy. That includes talking about how so few people hold so much of the wealth and the policies that have led to the widening income gap between the low and middle class and the wealthy elites. They will also be discussing the federal layoffs and the true cost of these layoffs are create, the true costs that these layoffs are creating. They'll be talking about the direct attacks on our LGBTQ plus friends, family and neighbors, and the unconstitutional immigration policies and threats to citizenship. If President Trump gets his way, my youngest daughter Chloe will no longer be considered an American citizen because she was born overseas. I'm particularly excited because both Bernie and Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez are role models for me as they are practicing democratic socialists. Democratic socialism is a misunderstood, yet very embracing philosophy, philosophy that promotes a government social safety net for everyone. Government is paid for by taxpayers so that we can all have a centralized and unprecedented, unprejudiced support system. Whether it's the police or building permits that ensure tenant safety or firefighters or public education system, the government is meant to work for everyone and meet their needs. As a dual citizen with the USA and Australia, I have been asked what the biggest difference between America and Australia is. My response is medical bankruptcy. Of course, there's a lot of differences, but this one makes a really clear point. Medical bills are the leading cause of bankruptcy in America, but in Australia, it's unheard of because the government has set up a social safety net that prevents this from ever happening. I'm a proud democratic socialist, which is part of the Democratic Party. I want the government to work for everyone, not just those I agree with, and so do Bernie and AOC. I look forward to attending the event with some of my colleagues and a lot of my friends, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jordan, Counselor Carlino.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak really quickly to the daycare thing and the release of that from the agreement. I'm glad that we put it on pause for now and, you know, since in the original agreement, you know, it was going to come with some public benefit. I just hope that when we return it to committee and bring it back, I just hope that we can still provide some sort of public benefit here and just not let, let, let our leverage go when we have control over things like that. So I'm, I'm glad we're revisiting it and thanks to everybody for putting on pause for now.
All right, thank you, Counselor Carlino, Counselor Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone at All Nations Health Center and the Youth Engagement Leadership and Learning for their presentation earlier. And just remind folks that Missoula is hosting the 56th Annual Kayao Powow Celebration this Friday and Saturday, April 18th and 19th at the Adams Center on campus, University of Montana. The event is free and open to the public for all to enjoy. So if you're interested in learning more about our indigenous neighbors, it's a great place to check it out.
Nice, thank you for that announcement, that's great. Counsel Anderson?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor, super quick, I was absent last week because I was in DC. And I go back to a conference every spring and I will definitely say that there is a marked difference in the way people are feeling about democracy and faith in government right now. And it's pretty disheartening. And it just reminds me that us here around this horseshoe may not disagree all the time, but we're all here working for the betterment of our community and trying when we can to garner trust and, and try to actually answer the call to public service. And we are not in it for ourselves. I saw a comment on one of the posts in regards to something that the city was doing and they were like, they must be in it for themselves. And I can guarantee you that none of the us who are sitting around this horseshoe, whether I agree with you or not, I know that no one's in it for themselves. We're in it because we care about our community and this is the way that we can show up and, and serve, you know, answer the call to service. So it's hard times right now, but I am even more committed to the fact that municipal government is the one that's closest to the people and actually has a real impact in people's day-to-day lives. And a lot of it is not what is seen, but is unseen. The clean water we drink and the roads that we drive and the parks that we play in and, you know, firefighters and police officers who come when you call 911. And all of that is so incredibly important to making our community work for everyone. And so I just want to thank all of you for your call to public service. And, you know, we're going to keep fighting the good fight and hopefully, you know, that things will balance themselves out. Because I know that there's a lot of fear right now from a lot of different people about just their retirement or whether or not their friends and neighbors are safe. Or I had this wonderful Uber driver who was recently moved here from Pakistan, oh, sorry, Afghanistan, and he had helped the US military during our war in Afghanistan. And it took him years to get his paperwork all figured out and moved here. And he was in hiding while he was waiting for that paperwork to come through. And he's been here for a couple of months and he'd been Uber driving for two weeks and he was terrified. And it just made me so incredibly sad because that's the type of person who, you know, once he finally got here, this was supposed to be the land of the free and his days of being, living in terror were supposed to be over. And they weren't for him and it just really broke my heart. And I think that we all can do better, so.
Thanks, yeah, thanks for your comments, Counsel Anderson. Counsel Farmer?
Yes, I'll pass.
Okay, Counsel Cheryl?
Pass, thank you.
All righty, Counsel Nugent?
Madam Mayor, I rarely pass, so I'm not going to tonight. First of all, Ms. Anderson, thank you for sharing that story. I think that puts a very real face on just how much our country is letting people down right now. So I appreciate you sharing that. I wanted to just highlight a bill that we already talked about, but House Bill 311 and the rental application fees. This was a great bill two sessions ago, it was a good bill last session, it's a great bill right now. I'm glad that it is finally making its way through. I think it's probably good that they delineated between landlords and property managers. But there's even some stuff in here that I didn't think they needed to do, like they, this applies to four more units when it really could be anyone. I would love to see the legislature next session be even more proactive on things that could help renters. We've talked around this horseshoe before about the need for some sort of universal rental application. That's not something that we as a city council have the ability to do, but something like that would, I think, help everybody involved in property management, both from the property manager side, but also the applicant side where you don't have to fill out applications over and over again. Also would be great if there was a way to transfer the background check that you know one property manager just did for you if you are applying at a different property management company in the same time period. So I think there are ways that we can make this even better, but this is a great start and things like this are important. And despite a lot of frustrations I have with the legislature, there have been a few things that have come through that have actually been good, and this is one of them.
That was good to see, thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent and Counselor Vasika. Online, do you have any comments?
I'll pass, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. You are our only member online, so that wraps up our council comments. Thanks, everybody, for, for your comments. And that brings us to the end of our meeting, I will adjourn us at 7:04 PM, thanks for coming down.